All right, good afternoon. We're going to call this meeting into order. Sharon, roll call please. May here?
Here.
Yes, here.
Here.
Now, here. All right, can I make the motion to approve today's agenda?
Okay.
All right. Right, right. We are going to, spending this time following our planning meeting checklist that Barb sent us over the weekend. So I'm going to introduce Barb Dorn to the meeting. Just for everybody's information, according to today's meeting, so you're on camera. Yay. You're going to make sure that this is available, hopefully, to the public. We'll see how that works. Technology notwithstanding, so Barb, I'm going to turn over the table to you. Anybody else who's on Teams, if you could do your best to keep your cameras, your computers, your stuff muted as much as possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. It's nice to see everybody again. Happy Monday. I'm glad also Shelby Herrera, my assistant here at MSBA, has joined us. Thanks so much for coming, Shelby. I really appreciate it. You'll all become very familiar with Shelby's name throughout the next several months. She's very involved in superintendent search and I've asked her to sit in on some of these, especially early in the process while we get started with the planning. So again, it's great to see you. I hope you had a nice weekend. I hope you had a chance to review the materials that I sent to you. Thank you for participating in the qualification survey. I do have the results from that, some through online and some I received through Sharon. So I think we're ready to get rolling. First thing I want to do, I'm not going to do introductions again since we all met one another last week at the workshop, but I wanted to review the process with you. And first of all, ask if there were any questions on the booklets that you received in the meeting during the workshop. Did you have a chance to read through this? And was there anything that you wanted to revisit before we get into planning the search itself? Seeing no hands in the air, I'm going to assume that that's a note. So keep these handy. I'm not going to refer to them nearly as much, if at all, today, but do keep them throughout the search process. They'll prove very useful, I think, at several points during the search. So the first thing we're going to dive right into is timeline. I know there were questions last week about how soon we'll be setting the meetings that are going to be occurring this winter, and my answer was on Monday. So I asked you to bring your calendars. I hope you've checked if you have conflicts with any of the suggested dates. But if you could, first of all, just pull out that timeline. We're going to go through and select the dates and the times for all of the meetings you as a board need to hold between now and the conclusion of your search. So does everybody have that in front of them?
Board?
Got it. I'm assuming the board does. All right. You will have to raise your hand if you have a question. I'll keep trying to check down into the box where the board is sitting, and I will definitely answer any questions as we go through. So when you look at the timeline, the first thing that you'll notice is that October 5th is today. We are starting with the planning meeting. That was on the calendar already, so I haven't put that one as a question. If you glance down to about halfway, I'm going to start with that because that sort of drives the whole process. I have suggested January 25th as the application deadline. That is right in the heart of search season. I think the timing is real well. I think it fits with what you're trying to accomplish. You will probably get a lot of interest in this position. Most people will work on their applications in December when things slow down just a little bit, but for some superintendents and principals, January is a real good month to work on their application materials. So I selected January 25th, and my first question is, does that sound okay to you? Okay. Some nods? Okay. And that does not affect you as board members, of course, because there's no action or no meeting required on the 25th, but that will be the deadline at 11:59 PM on January 25th. That is the assumption we'll work with on building the rest of the timeline. All right, so backing up then, the stakeholder online survey, I've suggested open in the middle of October. That's not that far off, so October 16th, and it would remain open for about two and a half weeks. Generally, we'd like to see that survey open between six and nine weeks. Any longer than nine and people lose a lot of interest. And any shorter than six, you don't give people enough time to really get around to it if they're busy with other things going on. So that survey would open on the 16th of October. I would close it on November 2nd. Again, that's about a two and a half week timeframe. You'd have hard copies at the district office, and then if you chose, and I know we talked a little bit about this, if you chose to place hard copies throughout the community, you could do that as well. And then that two and a half week time period, someone would need to collect those right before the second and scan or fax all of those to me so I can include them with the results that were submitted online. All right, then I put that you would approve the hiring criteria, the vacancy brochure, and we would actually formally approve the timeline, I believe, at that meeting, either November 9th or 10th. All right, so I want you to look quickly at your calendars if you could. Is there a day that is better for you and a time? That meeting typically doesn't take very long. It's maybe a 15-minute to 30-minute meeting tops. By November 9th, we should have the results of those surveys incorporated into the hiring criteria. If we are hearing different things from the stakeholders, we'll start with what the board identified, of course, but the reason that I have that gap of a week between the survey closing and showing you a final vacancy brochure to approve is just in case we hear something different from the community and the stakeholders. So 9th or 10th, does anyone have a conflict that means you couldn't meet on either of those days?
So we do have a regular work meeting on the 9th.
Okay.
So, is that what you were going to say?
Yeah.
I think it would be good if we could, you know, maybe five o'clock or however much time Barb needs. Oh, regular board meeting?
We wouldn't have to make that part of meeting here because of the teams, but we could go from here to the annex right after.
That way it's just providing.
Sure. Would that be, would that work?
Absolutely. And if you've all had a chance to review the vacancy brochure, the timeline and the hiring criteria that are in that brochure, if you've had a chance to look at those in advance, so there's not much discussion, the approval of those items can actually take five or 10 minutes. So it could easily be worked into your already scheduled meeting.
Oh.
You want to just do that?
We do that.
If we can, of course, because we can't get your teams over there.
Oh, we can't do teams in our, in our meeting space?
Yes.
Yet? Do you think we will be, but it will provide?
I wouldn't guarantee it because it's still, we're waiting on equipment, they have their whole wiring. If the space is just so new that we're not quite set up for all the technology quite yet. I think we should, if we're going to do that, it should be early, early, four, 4:30, just to give folks a chance to get.
But.
Carolyn, I could join you just by telephone that night as well if there are any questions. I will try and have that brochure especially to Sharon a couple of days before the 9th, so that you'll have time to take a look at it. And I'll just be on the phone in case you have questions, but I don't think I would need the video connect that night because it just tends to go kind of quickly.
We do.
Well, I got a telephone, you could make that one, but I think.
That's okay, okay. The only concern I have with me something, like trying to fit something in between, is that quality is at four o'clock. And I know that because I haven't had a chance to meet for a while, so I don't want to, I don't want to start canceling all the meetings.
How late?
We'll call it, we'll dress up by five, so.
Yeah, we're right here in David's office, so I don't know. Barb was saying to incorporate your portion into.
Our regular agenda?
Our regular agenda.
If that, if that was certain, we could do, we could definitely do that. Right, 5:30, do it right on. Okay, let's do that.
Okay, so that will be a part of your regular meeting on 9th?
Yes.
All right, and what time does that meeting start?
5:30.
5:30? All right, I'll put November 9th, 5:30 PM, regular meeting, and then I can join you whenever. At the beginning, the middle, the end, it doesn't matter to me, but I will include it in the regular meeting at 5:30 on Monday, the 9th.
Yeah, we can make, you can decide.
Okay.
A quick, quick timeout. As we are getting more people in, it's making our screen a little crowded. So if everybody except for Barb could turn their cameras off, that would help give us a lot more screen real estate with Barb.
I think even if they turn that, because a lot of folks are muted on their video, I think what you need to do is go to, is someone at the computer at Teams?
I am.
Can you hover over my name, Barb Dorn, and there's three short dots there? If you hover over those three dots, you have a choice of mute participant, pin, or fit to frame. Try pin and see if that makes me the big picture for you, you folks. Did it work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so everyone has muted their video, but they'll still take up a whole square unless you pin the picture that you want to be large. So there we go. We're good. Thanks. All right, November 9th, 5:30 PM, regular meeting. That's when you will approve these things, and that, that really will not take very long if you have done your review of the brochure in advance, so. All right, then I suggested we would post the opening shortly thereafter, November 12th. We would get it on our application system, our website, MASA's website, the EdPost site. All of that will be ready to go by November, November 12th, and we would then close that on November 25th. That's the date that the application closes. The listening sessions, at this point, I've suggested we conduct those between November 30th and December 18th. That's about three weeks. Typically, the listening sessions, we get them done in one week. If we are coming into the community to do them, or if we're doing them via Teams or Zoom or some other Google Meet platform, we do them all in a week, meeting with staff, meeting with the community, meeting with the business folks, whoever you want us to meet with for listening sessions, we usually do it within a span of a week. If though, and we'll talk more about this later, you want to do the listening sessions online and give people 24/7 access to submitting their answers to those five questions, then it's just open that entire three weeks. So I wanted to list almost three weeks in there in case you went with the online option and people could take their time and fill out their, their answers at their leisure. So that's what we're suggesting doing that. It does tend to be a good time to do those because during the month of December, everyone always says how crazy it is around the holidays, and yet we've found for some reason that's when people have some downtime to take a breath, to give some thought to this position and fill out those surveys. So it ends the week before actual Christmas, so I don't think it bump up against folks that have plans over the actual holidays. All right, the next date you need to select as a board would be sometime between January 11th and January 22nd. This would be the interview training meeting. It's at least a two-hour meeting. It is fairly intense, and so I believe this would probably be a special meeting. I wouldn't recommend you piggyback it on a regular meeting, but a special meeting set aside to discuss the interview training as well as starting to think through the questions that you're going to be asking in round one and round two. So if you look at your calendars between January 11th and January 22nd, we cannot meet on the, on the 18th. That is a date that boards don't meet. So is there a day in there that we can put down for a board meeting for interview training?
What kind of time is it possible for that meeting?
I'm sorry, you shorted out. Could you say it again?
Oh, we're going to a one-day meeting?
Two hours.
Two hours, okay.
About two hours. I'll stay till you don't have any questions. I've had some boards that have a lot of questions. We've gone over two and a half hours. Sometimes we're done in an hour, hour and a half. It really is up to you, but I will stay until we're done with all the questions. We average two hours on that one.
Now, this will be for the candidates that were elected November 3rd.
So that will be the board that we've asked from January?
That will be the new board, you might say.
That will be the new board, correct?
New board starts when?
January 1st.
January 1st.
They don't start at November 3rd then?
No, they start January 1st.
Don, we do have a special election to replace John Fox, and his replacement starts right after, immediately after the election.
Okay.
So that, that's the only exception to that. The time, yeah. Does that make sense? Yeah.
So you'll have one new board member starting November 4th and three more board members, potentially incumbents, potentially not, starting January 1st? Okay.
This, uh, leadership conference is Thursday and Friday, the 14th and 15th, and then potentially Wednesday, the 13th. Our new board members usually go up for.
And also Tuesday night? For Tuesday night, for phase one, and then all these things.
Oh, does start Tuesday night, okay. So I would propose we at least wait until the 18th?
Up to the 18th.
Maybe, maybe the 18th or 19th?
So the 18th is.
Oh, that's right.
Because phase one, phase four.
I would say the 19th. Does anybody have any?
Okay, is that?
So you guys, I'll just say for 3rd.
Does anybody have objections to Tuesday, January 19th? Well, do you guys like the four to six timeframe?
I don't really have the base for it.
All right, I need to spread all day, 6:00 AM.
Right.
Uh, so Tuesday, the 19th, four to six time.
All right, Tuesday, the 19th, four to 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay. I know that the leadership conference, they're still in discussions about how that is going to look this year, talking to hotels, so on and so forth, but I do know that those dates, particularly the 19th, will not interfere with any of the plans they're currently making regarding the leadership conference. It's possible it's going to look a little different this year, but that date does work. So if we say Tuesday, the 19th, four to 6:00 PM for interview training. Great, okay.
Overlapped on a basis to our new board members.
Got it. Okay, application deadline, the 25th. Things get very busy after that. On January 26th, we will go through and make sure that all of the applications we're going to forward to you are complete, that they have uploaded their transcripts, they've uploaded their licenses, that they are who they say they are. And once we have a complete list or a pool of candidates, we will send all of those to you electronic on the 27th. So MSBA will do our vetting. We have a team of folks, including staff and service providers, that look through every resume. We compare every application to your hiring criteria. We come up with six to eight that we feel are the best fit based on what you've told us, and then we do our vetting. We talk to those candidates. We talk to their references, and we come prepared to present who we think is the best fit for Austin. During that same time, from the 27th until early February, you as board members are also going to be reviewing all of those applications. And you should be taking some notes and you should be jotting down who you are really interested in visiting with, who you think the strongest candidates are. And that, as I mentioned last week, can now be done electronically rather than you having to go into the district and look at the hard copies. So that's a huge advantage, I think, to technology is it gives you that entire timeframe to look through those applications at your convenience or to revisit them as many times as you may need to, to come up with the ones that you feel really rise to the top. So then I put February 3rd, 4th, or 5th, because it depends when you want to meet to select those that you want to interview. I've suggested the 3rd, 4th, or 5th of February, and how does that look to the board? That's a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Anybody?
Is that probably four to six or something like that again, or? I probably can't do it after.
Um, about how much time do you think that this meeting would take?
This one can take an hour and it can take three hours.
Oh.
It really depends on how much the board wants to hear about each of the candidates, how much agreement you have about who you want to interview, how much alignment there is between who you feel is the strongest candidates and who MSBA is suggesting, but we've been done it an hour before. I'd say if you had to have an average, two hours again is a good average.
Well, Thursday. Does anybody have any objections to Thursday? Do you want to put the four to six time? Do you want to change it up and go earlier in the day? No?
I'm thinking what you want. I don't have a time when everyone is fresh.
When everybody's fresh.
Yeah.
In terms of what?
In terms of.
No.
Yeah, so I know they're going to let it.
Or maybe people coming in on the board may be working during the day. It's true. Um, maybe just for consistency sake, take it as our part for the day, number down in the office, right? What do you think about that, Barb?
Or could you say it into the mic one time for me?
Um, how about February 4th? Four to six.
Sounds good. That works for me. All right.
You're hearing what?
So we stay fresh, all of us, an extra hour of sleep.
Yeah. Go to bed early or sleep in late Thursday. We'll give you. And our holiday meeting. Um, I believe at that point, most of our meetings will likely be over at the title hall. But here, here until, you know, if they're not, we've got.
Look out there. It's like Sharon just said, um, the allocation. We failed scheduling this, and I've seen that fall.
Oh, sure, yeah. Is there, is there another space, a night pool that might?
This is the only place we can get the technology that has. Other than. Let's say you got that one as well.
We'll, we'll talk about logistics at another time. Yeah. Does that, that sound good?
Thursday, the 4th, and repeat what time you wanted to do that.
We're going to keep it consistent at 4:00.
Four to 6:00 PM. All right, sounds good. Then that would mean that your first round of interviews typically occur shortly thereafter. So would you be able to do your interviews on the 8th and 9th, or the 9th and 10th? You typically, again, it's a board call, will interview six people, and usually we see boards do three in one day and three the next day. If you do six in one day, it is a long, long day. And if anyone's been through these interviews before, if you actually talk to six candidates and do 45 minutes to an hour with each of them, your brain gets very tired after three or four. So we suggest it's a two-day interview process, an hour or so each, but it's entirely up to the board. I would say if you're naming your candidates on the 4th, you do though want to interview them early mid-week, the week of February 8th.
Yes, Barbara, these in-person interviews?
It will depend on the CDC at that time. Last spring, we did no interviews in person. And this way, candidates, all board members, no one was in the same room, and it worked just fine. If by February pandemic has improved and guidelines have loosened, they can certainly be in person. Depending on what guidelines are, you just want to be careful that you don't require your candidates to come in person. If for whatever reason they prefer to do it remotely, you want to be able to offer them that opportunity. If they have compromised immune systems or people at home with compromised immune systems, requiring them to come in person can work against you with those candidates. They may turn you down. So I would say keep your options open. In the old world, we always did these interviews in person every single time, but I can't predict what February is going to look like, so it could be either way.
There's no wearing masks. I'd rather see them, they don't have masks on. That's true, you can see their facial expression.
We were surprised how well it worked to do the interviews remotely last spring. We were thrust into it in March very suddenly with the Hastings search to do everything electronically, and the interviews and the input forums and everything for that reason actually went quite well. We had a lot of people participate in interviews because they didn't have to come in person to watch, and every candidate did it remotely as well, and it, it worked. So we'll see what February looks like.
We have a board meeting, other, other committee meetings on Monday. I would say Tuesday and Wednesday might be a better choice than the 19th.
Yeah, so, yes, I would, I would agree. And we put 15, 20 minutes between the candidates to do a debrief, no?
Not to debrief, no. You will not discuss anything as a board until after your last candidate. If it's six people, you won't talk about anything until the end of that sixth interview. We do allow a 15-minute cushion between interviews, however, for people to get, you know, off, off online or out the door, and other people come in and you all can take a coffee or a restroom break. So we usually schedule them if you start at, pick a number, 3 o'clock. The next interview is 4:15, the next interview is 5:30. So an hour and 15-minute schedules. But we can change it per whatever your board wants to do.
That would be about you all. Yeah, so four hours time each day. Remember that ends up being.
Yep.
So I, does everybody feel good about the 30?
This one is good.
Yeah, we'll just figure it out a little bit closer. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Can we take a stab at it?
Take a stab at it? Should we do, well. Eight, three to seven?
I'm thinking that we nail on the date and then wait on the track, because when we do the rhythm, it'll give us a better indication of when they're available.
Oh, yeah.
And so. We lost it and just know that we're keeping our calendars.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing that. I apologize.
No.
No, I was just saying that, um, put the dates on the calendar, but keep the times to be determined, and then we can have a conversation with the new board members that will be coming onto the board to know when they're available.
Okay, so pick the dates, but and then at that meeting in January on, what date was that? January 19th? Then we could firm up the time to interview candidates on the 9th and 10th? Okay, yeah, you'll need about three and a half hours to four hours on the first day. You will need longer on the second day because you'll have deliberations after that third interview. So you have to allow at least another hour for deliberations after the conclusion of that day. So it might be more like a four and a half to five-hour day the second day. Okay, 9th and 10th with the times to be determined. Got it? If then your interviews are concluded on the 10th, you will want to conduct your second round of interviews. It's usually with the final two or final three candidates very soon after, sort of strike while the iron is hot philosophy. So I would suggest you conduct your second round of interviews on the 11th or 12th.
11. All the kids dinner, and then there's type, so.
Yes.
And that way it gives us a day off to breathe and come back while still.
Two, three.
Right. You're right, just an evening to breathe. That's right.
That's in terms of where the people can be working, streaming the whole off. True. I don't know when the board is going to be. Oh, I didn't think it was going to be, but we have three days in a row.
Yeah, the 15th on that Monday is no school either, so then we're out to the 16th, 16th or 17th.
I, I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
If you're looking at the 16th or 17th for your second round, then I might suggest you push your first round back to the 10th, 11th, and 12th, so that you don't have an entire week go by between the first round and the second round.
So. So 10th and 11th, 10th, 11th, and then the 16th? So.
Okay.
And then the following Tuesday? Anybody?
The only reason I suggest it too, and this is one thing that you need to think about, unfortunately, in that gap between the first round of interviews and then the second round, the longer timeframe between that, the more time for mischief. And I use mischief in a very nice way. It's amazing what people will dig up on your candidates and muddy the waters between the first and the second round if you have too long a gap. Yeah, word spreads, people talk, they seek out opinions in other communities, they Google, they do a lot of stuff between those two interviews, and oftentimes it's completely unproductive. So if you do go the 10th and 11th at the outside and say the 16th, because that's still, yeah, that's, that's four or five days between, but definitely you can do it. I just wouldn't go any later than that.
What was your?
The second round?
If you just miss the, that was our new board members, that's the nightmare, it's awful for them to take three days in a row, you know, three and a half hour chunks, eight in a row.
We're always asking that of them in January. Right, and you said that if they can't make all of the days, they should not attend any of them, correct?
That is ideal, but again, people get sick and sometimes they can only make it to one, but if they are planning to miss one and not the other, then that's probably not good. Unless you have. Unless you have them taped and they can watch the interviews at a later date. If they can watch them and see the answers and get a feel for the candidates and then be at the other one in person or online, then that's okay too.
Or we just. To have with the school on that Friday and just keep it the 9th and 10th and then meet on Friday, the 12th? I don't know if that, I don't know if that helps anybody.
I. First, I, I don't feel. This, this comfort with doing 9th, 10th, 11th. Given that we're gonna. Board everything. And people could. In the midnight mail. Oh, I think they will do that. I know that, you know. If we start pushing out too much further, then we won't have. Somebody, we, we won't be. And you would expect people to be like, oh, that.
And I, my schedule is fine. I'm just worried about.
I agree with you, Carolyn. I think this is a wonderful day. Might be Friday. And I think the new board members would like to make a good impression. So they might want to take a half a sick day or something.
Well, well, we're not gonna promote that. I think we just have to go with, you know, maybe. We just have to go with anything. Are you, are we good with that?
Are we going with the 9th, 10th?
10th, 11th.
Got it.
Rip the bandaid off.
All right.
Do it.
Yep.
Feeling good about it? Yeah? Kathy?
I do. The 11th is around a day from me, but I think. That's really important.
What was?
When do we interview for a second time?
Usually three. And occasionally someone drops out and you end up with two.
What was the thing with the 12th? No students in. Well, I don't, you know. I don't know that that's quite a thing. I think it was just. Done, done, the Fridays are not productive. Which can be true. Um, especially Friday before a long weekend. Especially the Friday, like a week long. Um. If we can make those three days in a row, just do it. I think I would feel a little bit better about it.
That would be fine. I'd say possibly it's around the start at like the noon or later.
Yeah, maybe.
Cause I'm using.
Oh, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Okay, so now, that's.
Okay, so we're good. 9th, 10th. Second round, 9th, 10th, first round, 11th is second round.
Okay, do you want to do the same thing relative to time as well and wait to check your new board members' schedules?
For sure.
Okay. I would say on the 11th, I would lean toward the afternoon or evening, only because you will also have a board chair who needs to check references of your final three candidates between round one and round two.
So you're saying. They are.
Probably. Probably. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't schedule them in the morning because you do need time to do just a bit of due diligence on behalf of the board and make phone calls to two or three references for each of those two or three people. Um. Yeah, and I think if you schedule those in the afternoon or evening, that'll give some time for that work to get done Thursday morning. So it's tight, it can be done. You're gonna be tired, you're gonna need the weekend to rest, but that's all right.
Okay.
All right, time to be determined, 9th and 10th, first round. 11th, Thursday, second round. And then the, uh, either a committee of the board or an individual representative, typically the board chair would negotiate with your chosen candidate. Um, it's almost always the day after or day of that second round of interviews. So I would say on the 12th, you want those negotiations taking place. Is there any way you then happen to meet on the 16th? Or would you wait till the 22nd to approve the contract?
Um, our. 22nd. Work session meeting is? Would we?
Which day? I didn't hear that, Carolyn, I'm sorry.
The 22nd is a work session for us.
Okay.
Well, we could theoretically approve it. And that.
Okay. I only hesitate a bit because that's 10 days, 10, nine or 10 days after you have negotiated with your finalist. And a lot can happen in nine or 10 days. Is there any way that you could hold a special meeting to vote on the contract the week of the 15th? It shouldn't take long. If the board chair has been given parameters by the board and negotiates Friday or Saturday, comes to a verbal agreement with the candidate, it doesn't take the board very long because you wouldn't be continuing to get into the minutia. My only concern is that gives that candidate 10 days to consider other offers. Doesn't always happen, but it could. And that's why I'm just saying you don't want too much time between negotiations and approving a contract.
Oh, that's weird. The school holiday. Yeah. Could we do? A short meeting on the 16th?
Got an excuse?
What if you slid your interviews down a week and you did your interviews the 16th, 17th, 18th or 19th and then approved it on the 22nd?
Sure. You complain?
She was kind of talking fast.
So. So if we wanted to, if we want to approve our contract on the 22nd, what if we shifted everything from the 9th, 10th, 11th to 12th? Down one week to the 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th. Done.
That works? Okay. First round interviews, 16 and 17? Is that right?
Yeah.
Second round interviews then, 18 or 19? You still want to go with three straight days? Or do you want to take a break and do it on the 19th? I didn't know what the objections were to the 12th. I didn't hear that part, so I'm just suggesting that as an option.
It's a day for us, so in case anybody's taking.
Okay.
Kids on vacation days. I don't. Just do our, just do the same plan?
16, 17, 18.
16, 17, first round, 18. Second round. 19th negotiation, approve on the 22nd.
Got it. And the 22nd is a regular meeting?
Yeah, it's a regular work session meeting.
Okay. And what time would that be?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, thank you. Sorry, I didn't miss that. Okay. I'm gonna read back to you real quickly, the, the dates that there are meetings scheduled to make sure they align with yours. I will retype this though and get it back to you for consideration to make sure I didn't mess it up. All right, uh, November 9th at 5:30 to approve the timeline, hiring criteria and brochure. January, Tuesday, the 19th. 4 to 6:00 PM is a special meeting for interview training. Uh, February, Thursday, the 4th. You will meet at 4:00 PM for a special meeting to select your finalists and whittle down your interview questions. Then you will have February 16 and 17 as your first round with the time to be determined. Three to four hours each of those days. February 18th. Time to be determined, second round of interviews. And February 19th. Uh, now if you have the board chair negotiating on your behalf, we talked about this, I believe, that that can occur without having to do the open meeting law, 72 hours notice. If you choose to have a committee involved in those conversations, then you need to select a time for those obligations to, negotiations to occur, so you can post it. That's gonna be a, a board, a board choice on that. But that's the 19th. And then the 22nd at 4:00 PM, you would approve the contract. Is that what everyone else had? Okay, that's what I will type up. I'll send you another copy of it to ensure it still works. And then I would encourage when the new board members are on board that we get those times nailed down uh, for your candidate interviews as soon as we can. In fact, if we didn't have to wait until January 19th, that might be great if you could all pool your calendars at the first meeting of the year and pick times. We start getting inquiries from candidates real often about what time of day do you think those interviews will be? Um, so if we didn't have to wait till the 19th, that would be helpful, not required, but helpful. All right, congrats. The timeline is always the most difficult part and it takes the longest, so well done. Thank you very much for that. So now, moving on to the vacancy announcement, you do have a draft of that in front of you. It will look like this on the first page.
Yep, got it.
All right, so, um, I asked if you had any other verbiage you wanted to include? Uh, any changes you might want, especially in terms of what makes your district really special? Uh, what is wonderful about the community? This is a chance to really differentiate your opportunity from other opportunities that are out there. Now, I will say that, um, at least for Minnesota candidates, they already know about Austin Public Schools. And so your reputation, your reputation precedes you. Um, candidates are looking for usually three things when they decide whether or not to apply for a job. Uh, one is location. Where are they in the state and is that somewhere that I really want to live? They want to look at salary and what the compensation package would be. And then they always go with, um, word of mouth and reputation about relationships in particular amongst the board members and between the board and the superintendent. So you can say a lot of really great things on here and yet you know that people already know a lot about your district. And so don't spend too long trying to wordsmith this to the point that, um, you're reinventing the wheel because they do know a lot about you already. If they're a Minnesota candidate, they will know a lot and they may already have their eyes on the position. But was there anything in terms of the district or the community that you wanted changed? What did you think of sort of these phrases and things we pulled out? I want to thank Sharon for her help on it. A lot of people, I think, at the district participated in sending me points of pride and so on and so forth. And I want to thank them for that because I think it's a really, really good start. I'll fill in all the dates, obviously, that timeline. I'll fill that in, application deadline I'll fill in. Um, I have talked to Ryan, everything is in line with your style guide, so we're okay with the Pantone colors. Um, all of those things are, are lined up. He was great to send me logos that I could use and so on and so forth. Any changes to the front page?
Hey, hey.
Okay.
Our recent achievements with Baldridge.
I think that's.
Is that number three? Did I miss that?
Is that the 27, 2019 recipient of the performance excellence award achievement level? I think that's.
Is that Baldridge?
Okay, maybe we should call out the.
Is that clear?
It is Baldridge.
Sounds like.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so Barb, um, the third bullet point under the point of pride. The 2019 recipient of the Baldridge Performance Excellence Award. I think it needs to be called out that it's Baldridge because it doesn't. Um, jump out at you what the Performance Excellence Award is.
Okay, could you spell Baldridge for me to make sure I get that right?
Yep. B as in fall. A as in apple.
Okay.
L as in lion. D as in dog. R as in run. I as in ice cream. G as in dog. G as in go, E as in elephant.
That's what I would have guessed, but I was afraid it would be wrong. So, okay, 2019 recipient of the Baldridge Performance Excellence Award. You still want achievement level in there?
Yes, that, that level of the words that precede you. Bald is how we work through our professional strategic planning process.
Great.
You know what, it doesn't have a D at the end. It's B-A-L-D-R-I-G-E.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I just looked it up, but I was like, I think it's just without the D at the end and it's, I looked up the.
No D.
No D as in dog at the end?
Right.
So R-I-G-E. R-I-G-E. Okay, I'll cross out the D.
Um.
Can I ask you to recall, uh, an email that John sent us, uh, about a week ago? When we won the 2020 Recipiental Performance Excellent Award Achievement Level.
That's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was 2020.
Do we receive?
Who was in the. Who sent out the email two weeks ago on this?
Did we win? Did we win the 2020 award or the 2019?
If you could get on your.
That would be worth it.
I don't know, but.
Yeah.
School.
We're gonna find out if it's 2019 or 2020.
Okay.
There's a big problem, you guys. My other thought is we have an elementary school with a balanced calendar and I don't know if that is worth mentioning at all either.
That was in, that was in the information that, um, Sharon sent to me. I remember something about this elementary school calendars and I ran out of room. So I tried to go through and take out ones that were generic versus ones that were specific, but I can add that back in and just perhaps make the font smaller.
One elementary school with a balance. And I think, really, I think that's the gift. The, in this group that they have that, especially here in the Midwest.
The verbiage was, um, alternative calendar option for elementary students.
It's not alternative.
That's pretty, that's a pretty generic way of saying it.
Right, um, cause they don't have that option at any of our elementary schools. They only have that option at one elementary school. There's a kindergarten option. Or they can choose. At our kindergarten center, they can choose either a balanced calendar or a traditional calendar. But we have one designated elementary school that is only balanced calendar. If that makes any sense. Maybe I'd be, I don't want to get in the weeds with too many, too many specifics, but.
Yep. No, that, that was on there. Thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate it. Um, by adding the word Baldridge, we've also added another line there. And I, it gets really tough because I don't want to make the font any smaller on this, but I could. Um, if we add something in there about the calendar option for elementary, then we're gonna have to probably eliminate one or two lines. So you almost have to go through and say, well, what would we cut if we add that? Just unfortunately, we don't have room for everything when there are so many wonderful things in a district.
Can we get. What about awarded, awarded 2019 Performance Excellent Award Achievement? I mean, I don't know if that creates more room, so you don't have to make any volume.
Any suggestions for wordsmithing to save space would be awesome.
Does that help?
How, how about talking about the date and recipient. Start with Baldridge Performance Excellence Award Achievement Level?
Yeah.
Take out 2019 or 2020? Sure?
Yeah, and then.
That might fit.
Take out recipient. And just start with Baldridge Performance Excellence.
Okay. That helps. Thanks, Kathy. So Baldridge Performance Excellence Award Achievement Level. We can take out 2019 recipient of the. Okay?
Yeah.
The second till, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I think you're gonna say the exact same thing you were about to say. We reference McPhail twice on here. So I would almost, you know, remove the parentheses part. Because we reference our partnership with McPhail already. But we also dedicated to our high school only have a renowned music program with new state of the art facility. So can you take, take that whole rest segment out?
Yep, that would save us a whole line. I was, yeah, it actually was what I was gonna ask, Carolyn. So if we said renowned music program with new state of the art facility.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, now we have room for something about elementary school calendars, if you still want to include that. I just need someone to do the wording for me.
It's really important that we call out that we have that. We need a word like, you know.
Oh.
It's, it's particular to us.
No, I don't, I don't necessarily word alternative. I don't necessarily word alternative, but I think the word I'm looking for is.
Well, it is. I think.
Yeah.
Those people are interested.
What is the 45?
Look into 45.
How about we come back to it? I made a note and put elementary calendar, dot, dot, dot. So why don't we take a break from it for right now? And then either during break, because I know you have some food coming, or before we wrap up, or even if someone wants to take ownership of it and send me an email tomorrow with this is the phrasing that we should use, I can add it in then, but we don't have to actually figure it out tonight. Okay? All right, so that's, that's great. That's a lot of points of pride. And congratulations on all of those things. That's a very attractive district to lead. So wonderful points of pride. Anything about the community that you'd want changed or added or deleted?
To all of you. We say solid business and educational partnerships. Again, we've referenced that already under our points of pride. So maybe it's not about our partnerships that we should be calling out in the, about the community, but more about our vibrant business sector.
Yeah, something about we got. There's jobs.
Right. I don't, we could also just pull that from out, because I don't think that we're want that. But if we're trying to, like the shopping that's available, or the, you know, the economic diversity of the community, or the economic opportunities that exist in the community. That's what we're trying to get at when we're thinking about how we're referencing Austin and helping it. People who might want to move here.
I would. I would. I would move in vers and healthy, healthy economic sectors to the top of it.
Sure. Maybe that calls it. It's kind of the same thing.
I was asking Sharon about if it's the 2019 or 2020 Baldridge Award. It is 2019. You're totally right. Barb, you had it right.
It is 2019?
Yep.
Okay. I may have room to leave that in there. 2019 Baldridge Excellence Award, or I could leave it without the date. I just think I might have room.
Whatever fits.
Whatever fits. If it fits, use it. Got it. 2019. And I wasn't right. Sharon was right. She's the one that sent that to me. So did I hear you're eliminating solid business educational partnerships, and you're moving diverse and healthy economic sectors to number one?
Yes.
And then are you changing the wording of that?
No.
No? Okay. We also could add the word shopping in the paragraph above. Offers abundant outdoor recreational activities as well as shopping, arts, music, sports, entertainment. We could put that word, because I've got quite a bit of space because of that word include. I can add a few more words into that paragraph up above without losing space.
We have. We have.
We have amazing restaurants.
We have amazing restaurants.
Okay, so dining?
Yes.
Should I add dining and shopping to that top paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we run any risks? We've got the Paramount Theater, and we don't specifically name any one thing we won't hold up other than that. You know, the Paramount, we've got the Great Bridges Theater, and we don't specifically mention the dome or the athletic field or.
Oh, true.
Well, I think that's. Having a historic Paramount Theater. Maybe, maybe that and the Hormel House.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Put a historical kind of thing to that.
Could you speak into the mic then and tell me, Carolyn, what that was?
Okay.
I know it has to do with history.
I would just, yes, historic Paramount Theater and Hormel House.
Okay. Historic Paramount Theater and Hormel House, right? Okay.
About the two domes, do you have that anywhere?
Not yet. I would have room for one more bullet point, though, if we're eliminating solid business and educational partnerships.
Well, those are a lot of people who age involved. The domes. And in those domes, there are permanent fields too, that are very unusual for anybody to have two of those fields.
Means the dome and the two turf fields.
Okay. So if there's a way to say that in, we'd have one line in a bullet. If there's a way to summarize it, I think that's a great idea.
Could you go to the, could you go to the previous list under full complement of extracurricular activities? We've already talked about arts and music, and we could talk about athletics with a dome and two turf fields.
How about?
Oh. With a state-of-the-art athletic facility?
A premier athletic facility?
Yeah.
No, why?
That would be under community.
It's, it's hard. So, Don, to your point, full complement of extracurricular activities, including premier athletic facilities with two turf fields? I don't have dome in there, though. And take out arts and music, since the next one says renowned music program with state-of-the-art facility?
I think if you say the two turf fields and a dome, we really don't have to have an adjective in front of that, because it's pretty well self-explanatory, the two turf fields and a dome. I guess, in my opinion on that first list, I was a little disappointed there was nothing mentioned about special ed.
Well, here are some things to consider then, too, because that is typically something, if it makes you different, we want to mention it. This is a list I pulled together from some other areas where I've seen. We do, okay, technology is in there now, so we have technology. Some schools have a college and career readiness program. It's pretty special. Graduation rates are sometimes very unique, graduation rates. If you've had a really recent referendum passage, we do sometimes see that in there. Special ed is occasionally called out. Adult education can be called out, and then extracurricular, which is in there now. So it's those kinds of things, to Don's point, that if it's something unique, we'll want to mention it. It's just these space constraints get really tough.
You got, the thing we can do to the Pi Academy and the Talters. That's extremely important.
So maybe getting back, getting back to the, um, the balanced calendar thing, maybe we could have innovative approaches to education through our balanced calendar option at the Pi Academy.
Might want to explore.
We'd have to call it a gifted and talented academy.
Right, but it's.
Well, if they're looking for a pretty important job, they'll do some research.
Yeah.
They would call it by its name and not look it up.
This, this is really just giving them a snapshot of what to expect. And if they know that there's an element that includes the balanced calendar, and they have this interesting thing over here that's called the Pi Academy, ooh, what's that? That's, wish I could find anything here. I want to know more.
I think if we're looking at the Pi Academy, the number one award, roll down the top, Advanced Academic Talent Development Program, that's really wordy, takes up two kinds. We could go in there and like you said, the Pi Academy for advanced.
But that, the Advanced Academic Talent Development Program is about our staff development. Edwina doing the mentorship, is that? Oh, this time? Oh, well, never mind.
But it's not for you.
It's not for.
If you don't like.
Well, if we're looking for more, if you're looking for more room on the left side, which is generally what's special about the school district, we could also take out the second sentence in that first paragraph. The school district serves the city of Austin, as well as a small eastern section of Freeborn County. You could pull that out and gain three more lines. And we could then include special education or whatever other things you want to include. And if geographically, that's just not as important to you as some of these other unique features, then let's put those features in and pull out that entire sentence and create some more room. Okay?
Yeah.
So that first one, we say robust, advanced academic talent development program, including the Pi Academy and robotic teams?
Of course.
How about academic? Advanced academic. Can we count robot? Advanced academic talent development. Pi Academy, so program.
Can we, can we say advanced academic talent development through the Pi Academy and other? Through the Pi Academy and non-flowers programs?
I have a suggestion, since it is 5 o'clock and we have until, I have to leave the meeting shortly after 6 for another meeting. How about we stop here in Carolyn's chair? Would you mind sending me some verbiage on these additional, whether it's special ed and robust this or academic that? And I will fit those in there this week. So we'll delegate the wordsmithing to you, and if you want to gather input from the rest of the board, before you send me that stuff, that's fine. And you'll see another draft of this before it goes public. That way, we're not getting too caught up in the weeds tonight, trying to come up with the perfect phrasing. Again, your reputation is out there, and the people who know your district who already want to apply will apply, no matter what words we have in here, so, okay? Very good. That's wonderful. And then we still have a little bit of room about the community if we're eliminating that top bullet. Doesn't mean I have to take it, because I can certainly make it fit with just one less thing. Okay?
Please, because we talk about the young professionals, about CEO and about reach. Okay, so we're going to take a quick break to grab some food. Just get pieces from Steve. That Sharon picked out for us. So let's do like a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 5:10.
Okay. Sounds good. Yep.
Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, buddy. Was that?
Everyone's right behind you.
Yes. What can we get you pepper on your sauce?
Oh.
Okay. Do you want a big cookie or a smaller cookie?
You guys are training me. They don't train me like this.
Why don't we treat it like that?
That one didn't have a napkin today.
It is.
What would you like? Yep. Would you like water or soda?
There you go.
Good.
I like one of these.
I don't want to.
This could be one size.
I'll just want to get this.
Say, I want you to remember, you start November 5th.
Okay. If I. There's a whole election that has to happen, the whole night has to happen. Let's not.
Let's not put the cart before the horse.
All right.
Kind of. Oh, your clothes are hilarious. I know, that's not me.
Isn't that good?
Woo.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
I've never seen a basketball.
I'll just stand here and eat off of it. You love that? Well, it's just feet. Do you want to throw it out?
Got lots more, so.
All right, what do we have? We have pepperoni and sausage.
I'm using a key here, dude.
Key is, yep.
Wow. Yeah, that was easy.
I love it. So. Called your boy dinner.
Well, that's why I was there in the one interview, I was like, I don't think I heard somebody say that. I didn't have the idea. Actually, I want to say. They still don't see ours.
Because the difference between a boy and a girl.
Yeah, like that. You know, it's. Um, but he's doing good.
Yes, right now. So we're right there.
Yay. Starting to look at schools for checks now, and that's, that's hard, isn't it? Yeah. I think so. At this point, moment in time, if I could go back and do it over, I would have kept that for another year.
Actually, that's what I was saying. It's, you see.
At the time I thought, this kid's big brain is so ready to like start kindergarten. And.
It's early to hold them back.
And I wish I would have, and but his little head is so ready for kindergarten. And, and I was going broke praying for preschools.
Yep, all those factors.
So I have it.
Oh, he gets my dear Santa's already. We have so much pizza. You have to have some. Eat.
Okay.
Eat.
Mr. Zies? I'm at a store, so I don't think I've ever been. You are up for one of the four here. Yeah, I'm rolling off, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your service. How long have you been doing that?
26 years.
Wow.
Ten would be here, but.
I just look new, Sharon.
I know. We've been here almost the same time, Don. Or did?
Yeah.
Really? I've listened to that harassment for so long. This is pepperoni. Oh, you've been here, Sharon.
Thank you.
97. Point three. Oh. Long time.
Here it is.
I know, you baby. So we've got pepperoni, and we have sausage. Want some of each or one or the other?
Hmm, both.
Oh.
Yep. I was gonna say, oh, no.
Drop it off.
Yeah. And we can mail it in during the day of the election.
Yeah.
Which is not for us.
All right, I think we're almost back, Barb. We got pizza this time. We like to take advantage of our great local restaurant.
Absolutely. Good idea.
Hold up. Is that okay? I'm gonna have some tea now for you.
I'll do it. Thank you, something.
You're having a coffee. Get a piece of that. Yeah, on the back, it says. Well, this is Katie. So we're almost assured. Because Dawn wishes she was in person, like, she could have missed it. We're stressed. Are, are we gonna be able to work and eat at the same time, folks? Yes. Awesome. All right. Don, I'm super chatty, just so you know.
What?
Chatty. What do you think I said? Because it's.
Everybody's, everybody's back, right?
We're all good.
Okay, sounds good. So now we're gonna move on to the second page of the vacancy brochure. And the first item there is leadership profile. So again, thanks to everybody for your input. I know it's difficult to choose out of that long list, the top six. Uh, but again, I got the feedback electronically as well as through Sharon. So thank you very much for doing that.
That walk on water.
Yes. That would be a high criteria to meet, but we could certainly try. Um, I could go down the list of that survey and tell you how many board members selected it. Or I could simply tell you what your top, we ended up with a top seven or eight, I think.
Go ahead.
I'll just do that, I won't beat.
Just the top ones, you don't want to know specifically that zero, zero, one, two, five. Your first, um, I'll give you the top vote getters first. So these are the hiring criteria that would be listed under the leadership profile. Uh, you would have a people person with proven abilities in human relations and communications. Then you would have promotes business and community involvement in schools. Visible and accessible to the school board, staff, students, parents, and community. Those were the top three vote getters. Uh, then you would have, um, acts with honesty and an ethical manner with the school board, staff, and community. Develops and directs an effective leadership team. Develops trust and works collaboratively with diverse groups of stakeholders. Effectively mediates and accommodates different perspectives and values teamwork. And has experience in school finance. And that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that would be top eight. From, coming from your board. Any of those, the verbiage can be changed or tweaked a bit. These are not written in stone. Sometimes there are board members who really like to word, uh, wordsmith things. So sometimes they'll rewrite these a little bit to include more specific points regarding Austin Public Schools, for example. Uh, but for now, those would be the eight hiring criteria that would be included in the brochure. As well as the question on how important is it that the next superintendent has previous experience as superintendent? Uh, three of you felt that yes, that was important, and four of you said no. So in that case, we would probably put in the brochure, previous experience preferred but not required. If that's all right. So the majority had not necessarily having previous experience, so. Any thoughts on those criteria? Does anyone want to add or change or stick out extra word in here? The one that.
You had suggested six as eight.
Um, eight is more than normal, but there was a tie. A lot of responses had three, so I don't know how to pick which of those that might rise to the top. Um, I. Use yours. I think it'll be okay though, because on that leadership profile, very often for districts, um, we put a mission, school mission. Mission statement fits under the leadership profile, but your mission statement is on the front page. The engage and power inspire. Yeah. So your mission is already on the front page. And so I think you have a little more room than most districts do, because that's typically where three or four sentences go. So we could certainly do that. I did have a question on one of them, though. Experience in school finance. Um, with a district as large as yours and having someone like Lori, who is, um, sort of boots-on-the-ground person who does the finance, was there more to that regarding experience in school finance? I don't think you want someone who necessarily is going to do a lot of that work, but is it the, the oversight? Is it, um, a referendum opportunity? Is it something specific around finance that you'd want me to add? That one's short enough where I can still put another five to 10 words in there, experience in school finance. Or I can think of it as is.
I think the thing is, is when I look at finances, I've seen it throughout my journey of being a school board member, is all of our programming and all of our staff and so much of what we do is dependent on what our finances look like and how we're able to build our finances. So it isn't so much the every day-to-day, but it's the understanding of the, that if that comes out, we're all sunk.
Okay.
I don't, I'm just throwing my two cents in there, but.
I, I've got one, I think, that might fit that, that's longer, that expounds a bit on it and talks more about school finance. Um, and oversight and understanding and conceptually running an organization as large as yours. So I'll, I'll look for some that captures that. It just seems a little short. And I know with the district you're large, as big as you, that it had, there was more to it. So I can expound on that one, I think, by using some other examples. Thank you for that, Kathy. Okay. Any other questions on your hiring criteria? What we'll look for now in that stakeholder survey, because this is the second page of that, is to see if they line up or if something completely in left field emerges from the survey. Then we'll revisit what we say, but for now, this is great foundation. Don, did you have something with your hand up?
Um, I was able to try an extra four out of the eight, which I'm pretty proud of. No. I was a little bit disappointed that on the second page, given the achievement gap and the fact that we have a large zone of community in these links, that we didn't emphasize, understands the effect of poverty on student learning and achievement. It seems to me to be a very crucial thing. We crunch numbers on student achievement and the gap between subsections, subgroups in our s- school district.
Yep. There were two board members that selected that in their top six. Um, so that was identified. The, all of the other ones, the top three had four votes. The next tier all had three votes. And then the effects of poverty had two. So it was definitely in the running. Um, we can add it, we can change it, we can combine some of these however you would like. These are your criteria, they're certainly not MSBAs.
I think, since that is such a big, people know about that. I think that that's something that would come out in the interview question or at the interview process. Because I'm guessing that whoever would step forward, if they didn't understand that, that might be.
I personally, I would expect any candidate to have some level of, um, understanding or performance, abilities, skills, knowledge, whatever, in all of those things. Every single one of them is important. I think what we're seeing here is that these are the ones that rise up to the top in terms of, of what's most important for us as we're moving forward. And I, I see a lot of, I see a lot of collaboration and, and, you know, David does a really good job of, um, like, of focusing outreach, but also, um, developing the team and real, and having, having a cohesive team, both at the district office and at the administrative level at all the buildings. I mean, to me, that, that's what this job is about. It's about empowering your team to go out and do what their more deep dive skills are. Because I don't want a superintendent who has to jump into the HR position or jump into the sped position or dive into finance or curriculum. I want somebody who can.
Run that team.
Run the team of people who do that. So I think what we've got here is really good. I think the poverty thing is very important, but I think that's important for, I mean, anybody coming in.
Well, I know a couple of years ago, we did a, um, a school board at the annual meeting presentation with Menetaka, I think, Cambridge, Austin, and other school. We had fifty-two percent of our students on free, we just loved. Menetaka had two percent. And so if you already did the system, um, four out of seven, um, voted, uh, uh, probably the trick. But, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be a superintendent that's coming down here. You could get an assistant principal from Tascow, Menetaka, uh, Eden Prairie, come down here. And they would have a very limited view of what it needs to be for in the school district.
Anything.
Well, I think that's going to be something that will be important as we begin looking at the applications that come in. Just see. What's their geographic, uh, experiences? Do they have? Do they have experience with a diverse population in many ways? Not just racial diversity and cultural diversity, but also economic.
The fact that my risk poverty in this, since the death of George Floyd, poverty is a brown and black phenomenon.
It is.
More women than white people. So let's move on.
You know, though, I, I think that's a really valid point, because keep in mind that these hiring criteria are going to be the yardstick by which we measure which candidates to suggest to you. And when I read the eight that did bubble up to the top, and maybe some of these can be merged together so that we can add something along those lines. Um, I think to Don's point, when I read these eight criteria, if this is the yardstick we're using, I could see a candidate who is a principal or superintendent in a district that is ninety-five percent white and has a 10% free and reduced lunch and five languages are spoken in the school district, they'd meet all of these criteria. If you're looking for a leader who really has experience with either socioeconomic or racial or cultural or ethnic or whatever it might be, you might want to call that out. So MSP service providers know that that's an important thing to this board. Obviously, it's important, but is that a criteria by which we're going to cut the list from twenty or thirty applicants to six? Does that make sense?
I think, I think what you're saying makes total sense, because the reason we, is we are so ingrained with poverty and diversity. And it's, it's who we are, so it's, it's.
Yeah.
Future. And so you're very right. We probably should have a very pointed, um, diversity, both culturally, economically, um, globally. We have a global student body here in Austin.
I think that would be wise, because we see an awful lot of middle-income, white districts looking for superintendents and candidates thinking they're qualified for it. Um, but this is very different. But you're right, you, you are so ingrained in who you are and who your student body is that it doesn't seem special if you're looking for candidates. And I don't mean that in a bad way, but it makes you different. And I think someone needs to be prepared for that, to Don's point, or they're not going to do very well in your district. So maybe we should move on, but this is something else, if you want to. Carolyn, you and I could talk tomorrow and wordsmith it a bit more.
I'm, I'm just wondering if it's something worth noting in by the numbers, that we have, you know, fifty-one percent non-white or whatever our free and, our free lunch population is, if that might be something worth noting by the numbers. Just so they.
Sure.
Have a good idea of what they're, what they're applying for.
Yep. It is the, part of that is the last bullet under your district. It's highly diverse student body who speak more than forty-five different home languages. However, by the numbers, that's a great idea, Angie, to put something in there about free and reduced lunch or, um, what percentage are non-white, however you want it worded, would be a great thing to add. I'll make a note of that.
Yeah, we can wordsmith a little bit with the, with the top characteristics.
Okay. All right, terrific. Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we move on from that? Because again, you have until November something to finalize this brochure, which includes hiring criteria. November ninth. So you've got quite a bit of time to continue to work on this, but I think that is a great call and, um, I really appreciate, appreciate that. I know candidates will as well. All right, the next piece on this leadership profile, or actually the brochure, is the salary and benefits. Again, we don't have to finalize the verbiage tonight, but I did provide four typical ways that, um, districts speak about salary. Any of these four will work. I will say that most candidates appreciate a number of some kind. Um, the very vague generalization of it'll be commensurate with your experience doesn't intrigue them as much as you flat-out saying, this is what the current suit makes or this is the minimum we're paying, or here is the range that we'll be paying. Any of those other options seem to be better received. So in looking at that list, was there one or two of those that generally appealed to the board more than the other ones did?
I prefer the third, the fourth option, one that either has minimum or provides a range. That's just me, though.
Number four.
You like the four, the one with the range?
It was a qualitative.
Yeah. And I think it's nice because that, that is in all of these. Uh, about being commensurate with experience and qualifications. He's putting the range. Makes it very realistic that we're not going to go above a certain number. So it might prevent somebody looking for a higher salary. Or you just can't afford. I don't know. You've got a last minute. We're versed in candidates, and I know we can afford them. Great.
Is it, is it noted anywhere in here, our low cost of living? Because.
Not in there yet.
I mean.
That's a great point. Anything about the community?
Our salary might be slightly lower than one in St. Menetaka, but the cost of living is low out here. Um, a brand-new five-thousand-square-foot house here is going to cost a whole lot less net wood in a suburb. So I don't know if it's worth noting or not, but, or if they.
Cost of living is relative, though. I mean, what if you're coming from a town?
It's true.
True.
I think Austin has the lowest income of any county in southeast Minnesota. This includes Houston County and Altonia, we have the lowest income.
Like, like average income for the county? Or are you talking about specifically superintendent jobs?
What?
No, he's talking about the income.
Average income in.
Of the average citizen, not just superintendent.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's what I was talking, like, wait a minute. I, we've, I don't, we're paying more than.
You know, Mark, Raymond just sent us something from a digital, uh, ad over there, like, quote-unquote, about Reagan. Uh, it's an advertising firm that said the average home is ninety-five thousand, the average commute was sixty-point-five miles. And I believe that the average income rate.
Maybe.
Low-fifties. Couldn't be. But I don't know.
I, I would feel good about writing a range. Yeah. Sure.
And if you turn to the next page, you'll see the range. And I, I go one sixty-nine, one seventy-nine.
Well, I definitely could make a wider range than that.
I, I, I think we're going to, and we want to hit that kind of screen, so. And, uh, I don't think that would let you over there.
All right.
We're going to look at these numbers, we're going to know these numbers. For our second sheet.
Right.
Available housing is, would not be something to bring up, because we're hurting for housing.
This individual is going to make a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year.
They're not.
I don't think you're worried about.
I think that. What? So, I think, okay. Let's back this up. So I think we're, we're good on, maybe we're way ahead of ourselves. We're good on the, the one that provides us salary range.
Okay, the fourth one?
What, what conversation about, or what are those two numbers going to be?
Right. I would suggest you start that conversation tonight, not that you have to settle on final numbers, but if you come, if you came to a general agreement tonight of what your basement would be and what your ceiling would be, that would be good. And then just think about it a little bit more over the coming weeks and come prepared on November. on November 9th to put your stake in the ground with the low and the high. Okay? And there is the comparison chart in there for you with, I think, seven or eight other area districts. MSP just made a bunch of phone calls and tried to pull that together for you if that was helpful in coming up with the range.
I think to me, one piece of information that would be helpful in understanding your salary a little bit better would be how many years of experience each of those positions that each of those people have. Because if we're, it's like, I'm not going to hire somebody who has no experience at David's end of his career
Right.
Pay rate. I'm assuming everybody else is thinking in the same, same thing. Well, what would be a reasonable, like, if you're, if you're coming in and this is going to be your first superintendent fee, what's a reasonable first year superintendent salary versus, you know, maybe somebody who has 10 years' experience or 20 years' experience?
Well, and the other thing is, there's, there's one thing listing the salary, there's another thing listing a total package.
Correct.
I think we've got, we've got numbers that aren't listed here that add to the bottom line. So I think we have finding a range within what we're spending because we don't have David's total package. And that, I think that would be a good thing to
I'm not looking for a superintendent right now either. Why? Because they pay, if your students, they would pay $10,000 a year more, the 403 contribution is higher, they more seat dates. They more vacation days. That's 30 miles closer to the city. I'm being, I'm being super sarcastic.
But with rehire him, if you, if he doesn't have a good starting salary, then it'll say you get a higher percentage in there to get him up where you want him. And the whole town's going to cry about it. In other words, you've got to get it respectable right away, or you'll pay the next time his salary comes up.
For her.
But follow him.
Yeah, I know what you think. Yeah, we, we want to get it right. Low ball, for sure. But we also don't want to give somebody just fresh out, you know, very first time, the salary that David's was earning.
No.
That, that's not going to fly. The community would not be pleased with that. So should, can
Do it just right.
Do, okay. Good. Just right. Thanks, Goldilocks. Um, let's, can I, can I talk to the principal and maybe have a conversation with you and maybe bring back some numbers to everybody?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, you're
No, wait a minute. You've got numbers right here.
Well, that's, there's not enough numbers there.
What do you want to get?
Well, I want to, I don't want to know exactly what my 10-year, well-seasoned superintendent are getting. I want to know what somebody who's in their first year as a superintendent potentially gets. Because that will start to give me a whole, of your range. I don't want to just arbitrarily say 149, 193, because those are the two kinds on this number. I don't, I don't know that, you know, that's probably something okay, but I also don't want to just willy-nilly throw all the numbers.
I have, back when we negotiated superintendent expenses salary back in 2018, I have a breakdown of the package from Big Nine. I'd be happy to just forward that to all of you to kind of peruse because it would, it would help to look at the total package
That would help.
That each superintendent is paid. So I can, how about I just do that?
That sounds great.
Maybe
That will help a lot. Can you make a recommendation? I will make a recommendation. Just looking at this, it's obviously really not paying any other insurance.
He's a military guy.
Yeah. So that's just a card. That's just Awesome.
Generally, generally speaking, you don't want too big of a range also. If there's too much room in there, then people read into it whatever they want. On average, we see about a $20,000 range, maybe $30,000 range. If it starts to be 40,000 or 50,000, then it's just like, it's not helpful for anybody. So Carolyn, you and I'll just talk further. How about, and I think that research that Angie has would be great to consider. I know districts, it's public information. If you want to see contracts, you could just call and ask for a copy of the contract from neighboring districts too. And then you really get into minutia.
Are, are that helpful to you as well? Or do you
I'm sorry you were shorting out, I didn't hear that.
Sorry. Would it be helpful if I sent that to you as well?
Um, if you'd like to, for us, one of the biggest dictators on this is geographic area. So if there's going to be some other searches in southeastern Minnesota, it would be really cool to see that. For our searches up north, I don't think it would be very relevant because it's amazing based on where you're at in the state and how these salaries change.
Okay.
But that's great. That's a lot of work. So if you were involved in that years ago, kudos. Lot of information because there are so many variables. I mean, enrollment, location in state, years of experience, kind of experience is a lot, but more information is often better. All right, so that was the last thing on the second page of the brochure that we needed to touch base on. I'll continue to make changes to it and I'll talk to Carolyn for some of the wordsmithing on the front page as well as some of the information on the back. Thanks so much for the conversation around that. I think you know your community and your school district obviously very well, and I think you're going to come up with a very attractive brochure as a result. So great job on that. All right, why don't we move on to that qualifications survey? That is the three-page document that was in your packet. That's the one that will go online on the calendar. I have it opening October 16th, so nine days from now, this would go live. I will put the date in there, but that will only remain open until November 2nd. I will send the final copy of this to Sharon. So if you'd like, you could put copies of it around the district. I'll also send a link when it's ready to go live so that that link can be advertised through your website, Facebook page, email blast to parents, email blast to staff, business community. Getting the word out right away while excitement is high will be important. And then usually with about three to four days left, we'll send another blast out to those folks, reminding them that the survey is about to close. So that electronic link, again, that's where we get 99% of the responses, but we don't want to discount people who would like to fill it out in person. Now, I know last time during the workshop, we had a little bit of a conversation around language. I do have this survey in Spanish. Is that helpful or do you have other languages that, I don't want to do one language and not more if you have a very equitable distribution of languages in the community?
No, I I think Spanish is good. If we need to have some translation language, maybe as possible, whoever's there is available to do some translation.
So a Spanish link would be useful?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Let me make that, the changes on this one. So we have two versions of it, Spanish and English, and I'll get all of that information to Sharon.
What international degree does superintendent have to have? A doctor's degree or what?
They have to have a superintendent license. That's the only requirement in state of Minnesota is to have a license in the state of Minnesota. Some have doctorates, some have masters, some have simply BAs or BSs.
Okay, that's
The only requirement's the license.
We put on the second need of the duty survey, those are the same things that we chose from.
Correct.
Back in, it looks very different than what we chose and put on the flyer to all candidates.
If that happens, and it happens very rarely, we'll need to revisit that brochure and combine, I think, the board's view with the community's view. It doesn't happen very often, and yet it does. So that's why we have that whole week between when the survey closes and when you guys look at the final survey. Gives us an entire week to really see if those trends have gone in different directions. Then we need to take a good, hard look at this brochure and make some changes to it.
Okay.
Barb, do you see that happening when you've got a district that has issues that are dividing a community?
Yes, we see that. Yes. And that's just something the board will work through when the time gets closer. People take positions and it's unfortunate when a single issue drives the choice of a superintendent because the scope of the superintendent's role is so much larger than a single issue or even two issues. So we'll want to be really careful if that starts to arise in a stakeholder survey that there are camps or potentially divisive issues that could cause this to be a more difficult search than necessary. We'll work through that. We will work through it. Great question. And yes, it can happen. So, any other questions on that three-page survey? And my follow-up that I'll be sending to Sharon. I won't send her anything until it's closer to going live, probably in another week, end of next week perhaps, but that will be going out. All right, so a second piece of stakeholder input are those listening sessions. Did anyone give some thought to those five questions? If you would like us to schedule sessions, you know, from seven in the morning to 7:45 with a certain group of teachers, a community at six o'clock at night on Tuesday, or did you think you may want it to go electronic and be available 24/7 for people to participate in that survey? If it's electronic, I think I would add the self-selection of which group do you most fit in, staff, parent, business member. I mean, we would add that to the listening session survey if it's online. So you could take a look at those answers by group if you wanted to do that. If it's in person, I know when I'm talking to teachers, I know when I'm talking to the business community, but if it's online, I think we might want to differentiate that.
Oh, I
If we go with the survey, it will be online and so they can access it anytime and we would then send that same kind of communication out with the link in all of those emails. But we also will leave these hard copies in many of the same places. If you choose to do it that way where it's online and people fill these out at their convenience, that's why we have a bit of time between the one survey closing and this one opening. If we did them within a week of each other, I think people would be super confused. But as it is right now, your first survey closes November 2nd, we could then open this survey, uh, November 30th, so almost a full four weeks later. And hopefully it will be enough time where it's not going to confuse people with having two different surveys. Or we schedule them and have people join us in these workshops, probably remotely, November. I don't know if it's going to be any better with the CDC guidelines or not, but we can certainly do them this way also.
And all of the districts, school offices, community locations where to survey. Does somebody, does anybody have any preference for in person? They don't have that. I'm thinking of a summer that might be a parent meeting. Oh, they're such a unique student makeup there. And when they do, I mean, they get Even online? No, that's But I don't know what they're doing. I don't know who, anything like that. It may not even be that. So it would be, it would be accessing an online survey or attending a Zoom meeting.
Sure.
Right? Does that work?
Right.
So I don't know that that would be Does anybody have any experience either way? Otherwise, I, I would say maybe just stick with the online survey approach and maybe just shoot an email specifically to communities that we would like to do that, like maybe make a point of Their office, for other people to contribute on their numbers and sending one to Yeah. Yeah. Do that and maybe we'll
I think Karen has a really good point in that summer is a kind of a, just as easy as that for people who may not speak English, that we can have a success culture too there to help interpret. I like the idea of having one opportunity person, but I don't even know. I think we're not even, I mean, the schools aren't even allowing any outside visitors in them right now at all. I don't even think we can even pull it off. I don't know how we would do that.
I think we should What they're doing currently and how we could access whatever structure.
Like when they did their meetings for, like, a long time ago when they first did them for the balanced calendar, they had them in their gym and they were
So
Peggy's right, they do get great
Why don't we tentatively go with the online thing? Then we want to also reach out to a specific principal to see if we can zero in on
Okay.
And Barb, the reason we're interested in doing that is because they have the most diverse population in our, in our district. And so a lot of non-teen parents and families that we just want to be sure that they have opportunity somewhere where they would feel comfortable, where I would feel comfortable in an online setting to jump on and try to
Okay.
Everybody could hear them. And I just want to make sure that we, we've tried.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, that sounds good. I think that's exactly what you should be doing. You as the board know your community far better than I do. So if you can figure out what really fits and what would be most accommodating to the most people as possible, that's what you'll do. So yeah, please continue to give it some thought. I'll put online question mark right now with perhaps a meeting or some way to solicit input from that rural diverse school, parents that, that bring their kids there. So I think that's great. It's a good compromise and we'll leave it at that for now until maybe we'll revisit it in November. Sound good?
That sounds great.
Okay. All right, that's the listening sessions. As far as the rest of the agenda, we just want to do some housekeeping and make sure that we're all on the same page. We do usually talk through the role of the superintendent. In the vast majority of cases, the superintendent is not involved in the search process at all. Occasionally, they are based on the preferences of the board. So I just wanted to find out where the Austin board is at with your current superintendent's participation or lack thereof in the process. Where are things at with that?
David, if you, if you He stepped away.
Okay. Got it. That simplifies things. Occasionally, the board and the superintendent are on different pages about what that looks like and it is something that we need to clarify expectations right up front. So I think in this case, that's great. If he has chosen to step away from the process, that's clear. All right, that will keep things real simple. School district spokesperson. Typically, the board chair, but if there are other members of the board that want that mantle, now is the time to speak up or hold your peace. It is best the search process is communicated to the public through one person who represents the board versus many of you talking to the paper or going on the radio. So who would that person be in your case?
I'm thinking
They're all 20
Okay. Board chair? Okay.
I want to That needs to change January.
I just said that. Neil bit my head off.
But you were different. So I think just for continuity, I would be a sort of the person that the chair being the spokesperson regardless of who that person was. Yeah.
Okay. Could you say that again to make sure I heard it clearly? So you would be comfortable with Carolyn being the spokesperson?
Correct.
Correct. And if she is re-elected but not elected chair, she would remain the spokesperson for continuity's sake? Is that what I heard or not?
I don't think there's any question. I'm pretty sure, I don't want to speak for everybody, but Let's just go with me for now and then The chair in January would, would either continue that if it's me, or that person would take the reins.
Got it. We'll cross that bridge as long as the Got it. We'll cross that bridge. As long as the board is aware that there is typically only one voice, because again, you're working as a, a whole. The collective voice of the board is what is shared with the community, not seven individuals. We're good? All right, that's where we're at. In-district contact person, I wonder who that's going to be? Share. I'm going to write down Sharon's name. We've already worked together on many things, and it has been a pleasure, Sharon. So if it's all right with the board, I will work directly with her on anything administratively related. On our end, again, Shelby will begin to become more intimately involved in the process and will become Sharon's point person on a couple of things as well. So I'm going to write down her name. Is that okay with everybody?
Perfect.
Okay. Terrific. All right. Now it's time for questions, if you have any. If you want to go back to anything we've talked about tonight. Questions, concerns about the process, now is the time. I'm happy to answer everything you may ask.
How much input would Sharon have? She works with the superintendent all day long, all week long, all summer long, actually. What weight do you put on her? Because she has to deal with all the little idiosyncrasies that come up. What weight is usually given to her as far as choices of superintendents?
That's a great question. That is a really great question. I would say there's a difference between formally collecting and evaluating that input from perhaps a long-term administrative assistant and informally collecting and evaluating that. Obviously, as one person, Sharon should fill out the survey and identify the group that she's representing, staff, however that might be. And that input is considered in the aggregate with everyone else. Likewise, with the listening sessions, if we hold a listening session separately for district support staff, oftentimes that's where we hear a lot of things that we might not otherwise hear. We could call out on the listening session survey, not just if you're staff, but are you district support staff? Are you in the administrative team? Figure out a little narrower category for folks. I will tell you from an informal perspective that very often, a longtime administrative person that has worked for the district has invaluable insight, which occasionally she may share with MSBA, or he may share with MSBA. I would not say, though, that that individual has any say. That's, that's a tricky word. When you say what, or what vote, or what weight, or what say do they have, I would be very careful to say none different than anyone else who works for the district. You don't want to be accused of favoritism. And so we'll want to be careful how we may handle that. But I've gotten to know some administrative assistants very, very well when it comes to a superintendent search. And I can't tell you the number of times someone has said, off the record, and I have to promise, off the record, and it stays that way. But that, that insight can be useful as we shape interview questions, as I may look at results from the surveys. But I think treating everyone equally is also really important, not necessarily waiting, waiting with an EIGHD, waiting someone's opinion more heavily. We've had special interest groups that want more say, whether it's athletic donors, or performance donors, or certain groups of parents. A lot of people start to feel entitled to their opinion being more important than other people's opinion. And so we want to make sure that we ensure everyone's voice is equally important. That being said, someone who knows a lot about the district can be a great resource for me. And if you want to talk to the board members, or they want to talk, be careful you're not talking board business with staff and be careful what you're asking or soliciting from anybody. And yet, certainly in the community the size of Austin, people talk. Opinions, opinions are important. Did I dance around that one? Okay? Could you hear my tap, tap dancing shoes as I was trying to answer it? And we just need to be very careful about perception of favoritism and the weight of people's opinions. Careful about that.
Thank you.
Great question. Thanks for asking it. Other questions? We're good? You got a lot done in two hours. Seriously, two hours and a break. You got a lot done. We still have some work to do on finalizing the verbiage in the brochure, and I know I'll work with Caroline on that, or Carolyn on that. You also need to give a lot more thought to the salary range. So that's ready to go and be, be ready to go on November 9th with that. So I'll send a lot more information to you. Probably not until that meeting gets closer. So I'd say in early November, you can expect something from me through Sharon again. And in the meantime, I'll continue to visit with Carolyn on some of these loose ends. Does that sound okay?
The super, higher than the Austin Rob, Albert Lee? Are they about the same?
Generally speaking, from what we've seen, they are higher. And some of it is due to cost of living. I still think that's a great point, Angie, about cost of living. And you can call and get that information at any time. It's also probably on MDE's website. We usually just pick up a phone and call a district office and ask, what's the base salary of the superintendent? And that information you can have within a minute or two. So feel free to dig around a little bit in the districts you're interested in looking at. Okay.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you so much, Barb, for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Stay well and take care. We'll see you again soon. Bye-bye.